Okay. Welcome to the June 6, 2023 meeting of the Pownell Planning Commission. We're gonna start with a member, board member roll call. Start to my left.
Brian Harris. Stacy Boxer. Nobody on. Jim Winchester.
Um, Jim, Kosis is joining right now.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Roy Larsson.
Megan Miranda.
Fred Miller. Who was joining?
Jim Kosis.
Oh, I remember. Okay, okay. Approval of agenda. General is as follows: Approval of minutes for May 2nd. Pledge of allegiance, discussion. Solid waste ordinance enforcement update. Solid waste dumping surveillance update and discussion. Public comment and adjourn. So...
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes for May 2nd.
Is it all?
Had Stacy, Michelle, Megan and me.
We didn't have a quorum then, is that what the problem was?
Right. Absent was... So we don't have a quorum to approve May 2nd.
Why, who was?
Present was myself, Stacy, Michelle.
Oh, so you'd need Megan.
Oh, we have, we have majority of all who were present at that meeting. I don't know if that would qualify.
Yeah, I think so, don't I?
I think it would.
Right, Jim?
I make a motion of...
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're abstaining because you were absent, right?
Correct.
So Stacy, 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 Megan and myself. That works. We approve, we approve of minutes.
It's approved.
So our next agenda item is a discussion on pledge of allegiance at the beginning of our meetings. I don't know how much of a discussion we need to have. I know that the select board recently discussed and voted to include that.
I don't know where that even come from. And I don't even think it's pertinent to what we do.
Pledge of allegiance?
Yeah, what does that have to do with town governance and the, the, the business of the planning commission?
Yeah.
I think it's, it's inappropriate.
It's inappropriate.
Hey, John!
And it also...
I don't.
It... I am not one of the people that it puts on the spot, but there are people who feel that it's a personal matter, whether they say under God or not. And I don't think, I don't think it's appropriate to put people on the spot.
That it was not allowed to say under God, I mean, but I have... I object to it as well.
You do?
I do. I just don't think it belongs here.
Yeah.
And I don't object to the pledge.
No.
Of course, but it's just very wrong.
It's that we're not patriotic, but...
No, well, we wouldn't be here if we weren't good citizens. We've been participating for years as citizens. You know, and, and in a participatory democracy. But the, the fact is that it's just, that's not our, that's not our...
Question is, are they gonna ask schoolchildren to do this pledge?
Well, they're getting into that.
Well, yeah, that has nothing, that discussion has nothing to do with the planning commission either.
Right.
So if you're gonna go on the basis that has nothing to do with PC, then you have to stick to that.
Well, you have to call the schools and find out.
But it's fair enough.
But, but just for here, I just think it has nothing to do with the town governance.
Put it on the agenda.
I did.
And why was it put on the agenda? Because the select board had...
I, I agreed with what the select board decided to do. And I thought it was a good idea. I, I think it's a, you know, it's my, again, it's a personal choice thing.
But if you...
If I would, if I would like to start a meeting myself personally with a pledge of allegiance, I don't think...
I don't care either way.
Offended by that or...
Well, whether they should or not is not the question.
Yeah.
Because there are people who are, some, there are people who are atheists, I'm not one of them, who do not believe that, to have to say, under God. And so what you're doing is you're putting their personal, uh, deeply held beliefs on the spot in public. Why? It's not, it has nothing to do with the planning commission, with what we do. And, um, it, it, it's just inappropriate, in my opinion.
I agree.
Did you have anything else that you thought that...
No, I just don't think it's pertinent to what we do.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we could put other things on the agenda that we have to do, play checkers before we start the meeting. I mean, you know, it's not appropriate, it's like, you know.
Yeah, we're here to plan the future.
I think a lot of people, you know, a lot of people... Personally, I've been in the military. I've been a legion for 40 years. I, I feel, I don't care either way, to be honest with you.
You're right.
I don't care either way.
Yeah.
If you wanna have it, have it. If you don't, don't. It doesn't matter to me. Whatever you wanna go around the table and check us off.
Oh, we're having a discussion right now.
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, that's my feeling about the whole thing. If a lot of people don't feel about it, then hey.
I oppose it. The same reason that Megan is.
Okay.
That we are all here to, to be good citizens. I don't think we need to proclaim. It's just... I'm also better, by the way.
To, yeah, do your job and...
We're two people. Three people. I don't care either way. I mean, it takes about 15 seconds to do it.
I'm for saying it, anybody that's willing to say it. Not to, if they want to, they do.
What would a little Facebook post say about the people who don't say it?
But no matter what they say, really, if you, if you, it's a personal right to do it. If you, if, in my view, it's a personal right.
Then it shouldn't be made so public. That's my feeling. And I, I believe in everything it states and, and I believe in God, so I don't have an issue with it. I'm just saying there are people who do. And I feel like it's a loyalty pledge. All of a sudden, we're demanding some kind of, uh...
Loyalty is more respect.
No, it's not. I, I show my respect.
You do it.
But I show my respect by voting and by being here and by participating and by writing letters to the editor and by, you know, being a staunch participant in my democracy. And I just, I don't feel like giving lip service before every meeting really fast, the way we used to say it as kids.
That's why it's not a personal choice.
You know, it's what, it, what does it have to do with town governance?
Doesn't have to do with that. They say, they say it in a lot of places.
That's right.
I know other, I know other towns that do say it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of places that do. That's, that's a choice.
So I, I kind of have the mindset, Jim, is I'm not opposed to it, but I'm not in favor of it. My main thing would be, if we do this, what's to say we don't have somebody introduce? Extreme case, mind you, that we have to say a prayer to something none of us or some of us may not agree with. Yo, I'm not gonna call out any specific religion because I don't want that, you know, brought back on me. But my, that's my concern is like, I personally would have no issue saying it. I come from, you know, my family has a long history of military service and I have tremendous respect for that. And I'm a very patriotic person.
But when did the legions have to do with the military service?
My point, my point is, is introducing something like this to say before a meeting, to your point is, you know, you don't feel you should have to because, you know, the under God thing. My concern is if you introduce something like this, what's to say we don't have, somebody say, well, I would like to open a prayer based on a certain religion?
You open up Pandora's box.
Precisely. That's, that's how I look at it.
Say the Lord's Prayer or something.
Well, the Lord's Prayer, the Muslim prayer, the Jewish prayer, Wiccan, Satanic, I don't care. It doesn't matter.
I don't have any objection to prayer or, or, you know, believing in God or, I mean, I, as I said, I, I'm not saying I'm, uh... I'm ju, all I'm saying is that there are other people out there.
Right.
And I agree with that point.
Or the select board, you know, and who...
Well, I, I, yeah, but I grew up saying the pledge every day, right?
Sure, I did too.
I stand for the national anthem. That's my choice. I know people that don't.
Yeah.
I may not agree with them, but I respect their choice as an American to express how they feel.
But it's, it becomes lip service anyway. I mean, come in, come in.
For some people it might, but I disagree that it's just lip service for everybody.
Come in and vote. Come in and do the work.
I guess if it's gonna make some of us feel uncomfortable, I don't think it should be done. I personally, if you wanna vote on it and I'm outvoted, I have no problem doing the pledge of allegiance, okay? It's not like I will not do it.
Yeah.
I have no problem doing it.
I don't, I don't think it's mandatory that you do it, even if it was something that you do.
Mandatory.
If you don't want to, you don't have to.
Make it mandatory. It would be illegal to make it mandatory.
And I don't wanna not do it.
But you're gonna do it, but I mean, yeah.
So as it stands right now, this was just a discussion?
Yeah. Well, I think we should have more people here who are on the planning commission.
It was simply, it was simply nothing more than a discussion item. And I think we had heard from everybody. We had, I think, a pretty, pretty balanced discussion about it and we don't need to do anything.
Yeah.
So no vote?
No.
No need to vote. So we can move on.
It's kinda dipping your toe in the water to see what the reaction is.
We haven't heard from out there yet, anyway. Let's move on.
Okay. Solid waste ordinance enforcement update.
I don't know what's happening with that.
So this is actually just a really quick update. Um, I, we talked about it before. I don't know if you guys remember, when somebody gets a solid waste ordinance violation, the terror me will either decide if it goes to zoning administrator or health officer. Or in some circumstance, it could possibly go to animal control officer. And then from there, they issue fines if the issue is not resolved. They did decide, our constable, he is going to be working on a volunteer basis right now, but he will be going with either Leonard or Mike to, when they go to issue fines or go to the property to look at the property, stuff like that. So that's at the select board's discretion though.
What's the status of this? Have they issued any violations yet?
Um, we have a couple, yep, and Mike just brought in one yesterday that they did resolve the issue. They cleaned up the property. And then we have a couple that will be getting fines.
Okay, so, um... So how many calls from the general, because people need to understand that the, the general public needs to call in the complaint.
So we do probably get...
How many do you have?
We get like one or two per week.
Oh.
A lot of times they're about to save properties.
Surprise.
So those ones are, they're in process right now, so town is working on it.
Okay, well, that's interesting. One or two a week. I, I think we, have we done enough to make it clear to the public that, um, that's the process?
A flyer was sent out to each residence in the town.
Yes, sometime in the, earlier in the spring, wasn't it, in March?
Yes, yes. It was before town election or town, um, meeting. And the process for how you report violation was on there as well.
Is it on the town website?
Um, I, I believe it is, but I'll have to look into that because I wasn't...
I think it should be if it's not.
It is, yeah.
And maybe we could put it into the, um, the town report next spring?
Um, one thing too, how, I didn't hear how, how it was being, any of those things are being dealt with. But I know there's been a couple of complaints and there, people have talked to me about it. And I told them to come here and make the complaints, but they're dragging off garbage bags and doing that. That, is that bigger part of what those complaints are?
Yes.
People just aren't going to clean them up or...
Yes.
But I know there's a couple of people who've already talked to me about it and they're like, what can you do? I'm like, I can't do much. You gotta, don't make the complaints.
But we don't have a health officer, is that correct?
Mike is our acting health officer right now, Mike Gardner.
He's wearing all three hats.
Oh, boy.
Well, what are you gonna do, you know? He's got something going and, uh, you find some people. And personally, I think it's in place. It's been a long haul for us. We worked a long time to get this and I think it's, it's, it's going.
One of the places that we complain about a lot has started to do some, some minor cleanup. It's a long way from done. But it looks a lot sort of better.
Yeah. My son was involved in one of these places and only because the kids wouldn't go into school. So the kids are going to school. Been, been a month now. So the kids are in school. So he does go in the place and looks better outside, inside than it does outside. It's work, it's a work in progress. These, you know, there's strange things going on. I mean, somebody gave some money to somebody to do that and she's in a nursing home and they're trying to revoke this. It, it's complicated.
Oh, the property ownership part of it?
Yeah, yeah. Down by the racetrack, yeah. So that's the issue. The people that own the place are trying to get it back from somebody they gave money to that is now in a nursing home.
Yeah, I remember hearing something about that.
So it's working. Let's hope.
One step at a time. Just gotta keep moving forward.
That's what we're doing.
Also have to keep in mind that we're a small town with limited budget, so it's not like we can hire 15 enforcement officers to go out there and we don't have deep, we don't have endless pockets.
Buy us half a dozen dump trucks.
The only money in the world, they can't get rid of the place by a Snyder Film.
Yeah.
I mean, that's been going on for years, years. And there's so much stuff there. It scares me.
Well, at least the car's not by the side of the road anymore.
And that's a good point, yes.
That only took three years.
It's only took three years.
Yeah, so that's, that's why sometimes I don't feel so bad about Pownell, because William Town's got a lot deeper pockets than we do.
And they're still having trouble, yeah.
Yeah.
And Bennington has trouble too, and the same is everywhere, yeah.
You get people that dig their heels in that don't, that will not cooperate.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, you have to do the long protracted battle. I mean, Bennington's, what, in the last five years, how many properties have they finally had to confiscate through courts to condemn and tear down?
Yeah.
Those were all decade-long projects for them to finally accomplish that.
That's a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. And then did you say there were some that were some...
Yeah, especially when people dig their heels in and they will not cooperate. Did we just lose, oh, nevermind.
When I did...
TB went black, so I thought we dropped.
When we were doing the research for this project, you could, all around the country, you could, ah, different, uh, different...
Different strokes for different...
Well, different, people are, you know, object to paying dump, dumping, you know...
The sad thing is, people don't understand, like, we, we run a deficit at the transfer station. We're already, yo, we supplement it with our, with the tax dollars already.
Yeah.
Even with the metal, make money.
Oh, yeah, we, we lose probably 60 to 80,000 dollars a year. Well, I don't wanna say lose, but we spend in addition to what they bring in. I mean, Tom's doing a great job running it, but it is not even a neutral agency. I mean, we lose money on it.
Why do you lose money? I'm curious.
Operating costs, cost to get rid of materials versus what we bring in to charge people. We don't wanna charge too much because then you end up with more on the sides of the road. You start charging like 50, 75 dollars a mattress, you won't get any more of the dump. You'll find them all on the sides of the road.
That's right.
And the town's been down that road before.
Tires, the tires, what are they charging, $3 or something at the, at the truck?
Uh, depends on the tire size.
Yeah, yeah, obviously. But if you ever go on, on what they call Dark, Dark Woods Road on North Pownell Road, right?
Indian massacre.
Uh, and there's a dark woods curve. And you look over the side and there must be 150 tires down there.
And that's, yo, I'm 44 and that's, I remember that being a, a dump site honestly from when I was a little kid.
Oh, yeah. So long history in Pownell. You know, it's such a rural town and we've got so many backroads and places that are doing dumb stuff. It's just...
I know. I've helped clean up down by the Huzick Bend Trail. I pulled two huge truckloads out of there a couple of years ago where somebody had like gutted a car and there was almost an entire interior of a car dumped off the side of a trail, plus numerous household bags of garbage.
We've picked, we've cleaned up the river a million times.
Yep. I know. I got a cousin lives on Barber's Pond. He pulls a truckload out of, out from along the pond every year. He's pulled fridges and tires and car frames and...
We're getting better.
Yeah.
Let's put it that way.
We just need more citizens to help clean up.
Well, we got some cameras around too. We've had the help of...
Speaking of which, can we move on to the next item in the agenda?
Yes, if we're done with this one.
Well, that was a perfect segue.
Sometimes you forget your off camera.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, yeah, the solid waste dumping surveillance update and discussion.
That's interesting.
Well, no, we've been... There a cameras house somewhere?
Our cameras were, we were having issues with the cameras, with them connecting to the phone, but we got them set up. We put them down at the park to test them out. They are working now. The pictures are going to the camp or to the phones. The road guys are really busy right now grading roads. But Bill, who, I don't know if you guys know Bill Cottrell, he works half-time. He are doing buildings and grounds in half-time with the highway department. And he's gonna help me put those up, me and him, and then I think Joel's gonna go as well. And we have two locations, but I was just wondering if you guys knew any locations this year? Cause we have one extra camera that you've seen some trash.
So will the, are these cameras gonna be close enough and clear enough to read a license plate?
They, yes, you can read a license plate. I guess it would depend where the person parked.
So if you can't read a license plate, what's the sense, you know, to see somebody dumping something?
But a couple of the, the two spots that we chose, um, Tara asked me not to share our locations just because we don't want everybody to know where they were, otherwise they won't dump them there anymore. But they'll never get some. Both those places have pull-offs, so I think that when, if somebody goes there to dump trash, they're gonna be in a spot where we can't see the license plate.
That, that turnoff on Route 7, I mean, that, is that part of Pownell or is that...
Well, she, she can't say it because we don't want people to know where the cameras are.
Oh, that's right.
If you wanna, if you wanna talk to her after the meeting when it's not broadcast to the public.
Do you think people that are dumping are watching this video?
I don't know if there was any places this year that we noticed.
If they see that, I know.
Nothing new.
Okay.
Yeah, like, uh, you don't know, just, or they have somebody listening, you don't know.
Plus you don't want people to go to that area to look for the camera to just to be, try to be a jerk and like shoot it out of a truck or something.
So we should have those up this month.
I didn't say, I tell everybody to destroy the cameras around.
Yep.
Not on many, nowhere.
Yeah.
And, and that's over an instant.
And if the problem continues, I'm sure the town will somehow try to buy more cameras if we need to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, cameras are not, you don't have expensive.
Yeah, I think we started with three just to see how it went.
Yeah. Cause I know we had concerns.
Comes on your phone, is that what it is?
It would go straight to the phone.
Yeah, that way, even if you find the camera and destroy it, the images are still uploaded.
Mm-hmm. I think it's gonna get busy.
Oh. Is there, is there a specific fine for reporting somebody, you know, for catching somebody?
That's up to the police, because once we get that, we report it to the police and then they take care of it from there.
So there's no ordinance that we have that we have to say it's a...
It's in the, we do have bylaws.
For dumping, dude, but I think it's better to send it off to the police cause then it falls under the, the state law and dumping.
And I think it's all too late to try to handle that.
Littering and all that stuff.
But we do, Stacy, we do have...
It's probably gonna be a probably $500 fine.
We put it in, I guess.
Cause it's what the state is now, so.
I think the bylaws, it's the same as this.
Do they have to bylaw, put a, a sign up that says, you know, $500 fine for littering?
I think that's state, the state has it.
But it doesn't have to be where the camera is?
No, we checked with the LCT and we don't have to put up signs that say there's camera.
We're trying to trick the trickers.
We can put up some of those signs that say, smile, you're on camera. Wait, there is no camera. Okay?
Ew. I have a couple of those around.
I'm starting to start seeing them all over town then.
Yeah.
Signs of the road to be little signs, you're on camera.
Who's gonna find out? Well, it's to be brave.
Somebody will, that's the one.
No question.
Somebody's gonna do it.
You know, you're gonna try it.
I wonder, I've often wondered, cause I do a lot of pickup, I walk a lot and, and I carry a bag with me. And I've often wondered, there is this open carry law where if you're caught with some open...
Container?
Container of booze in your car, then you really get in trouble. I don't know what the, what the rule is, but, you know, it's worse than just drunk driving, right?
Why they throw it out the window?
Well, I wonder, is it just carelessness, defiance? Or is it, they just don't want it in their car?
Right, if they're stopped, they don't wanna have it.
So I, I, I thought, you know, is there a way to change that? No, there isn't. I can't think how you would change the open carry law. So then my other thought was, well, maybe just everybody could put their recycling bin out by the driveway and just throw it in the recycling bin, for goodness sake. And, and if you need it, take it, you know, if you need the cans.
Well, I remember being 18, 19 and not giving it, throwing it out the window.
Sure you do.
It's more...
There's just not giving. A lot of us at that age, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I know I can say the same thing, 18, 19 years old, felt the same way.
Yeah.
Be like, well, back, back then you had like Bottle Bell, you used to pick up all the cans, so. You used to joke, you're like, you chuck them out, be like, here you go, Bell.
I think...
You'll pick it up in a couple of days.
We missed.
I think some people do it just for the, we're giving it back. Somebody's gonna pick that up and get their money for it. That's, they just, mindset.
Yeah, but on these dirt, on these back roads, they really don't.
Potters wrappers and everything.
Not like, well, not like they used to. I mean, builders to be everywhere. I've seen them all over town.
We're pushing a...
Yeah, he had like a lawn garden cart thing. He'd have that thing piled high.
Oh, yeah, everything. That's amazing. And my floor of my truck, I get a, I just throw it over on that side and I go get a bag and throw it all in it. It's easier to do that than just try to throw it out a window. I just watch people do that, they'll walk down through and just...
So their trucks certainly neat, but they're...
Truck's not clean, but, not till I get my bag ready.
So you don't worry about the open carry law? I mean...
Well, I don't, I don't drink like, and don't drive anyway, you know, other, it's just everything else.
You know.
We don't drink at times.
I proposed that we give people a Pownell garbage bag, a little garbage bag that they could put in their car.
Yeah.
I think it would be good advertising for the town and maybe some people wouldn't be flinging garbage out.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea, right? Five dollar bags, what you find. You might find all them bags lying around.
Stacy, something in your car and fits over the...
Well, a rubbish bag, you know, put your rubbish in there too.
I have a, I have a, like a little...
They go on the backseat on the floor and then I make the kids clean them out.
Yeah, well, Jim Kosis has it. I think that's a good idea, Stacy. We, we could invest in that.
We can do that.
So my dentist gives this little plastic bag with like a toothbrush and... And that one, we wing that stuff out and we have like a garbage bag for the car.
Every day is a green update in Pownell.
Every day.
Well, usually Tom at the dump, if you've picked up garbage along the side of the road, he'll let you dump it there for free.
Yeah.
Anytime of year.
It's, you sign up as a road steward and then, and then you're totally, and then he'll totally trust you except whatever you bring in. So...
Shall we move on to public comment?
Thanks for the update.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So that brings us up to public comment.
You can go ahead, Jim.
Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, guys. How you doing? As always, I'm just always amazed at how the subject just gets moved all over the world on what you guys discuss. But number one, um, I think just, you started out the meeting, yes, there have been a few violations that have been issued out there. I guess the, the solid waste ordinance started in October and we only have two of them. In this whole town, there's only two violations that have been issued. I'm totally surprised. And then when I asked if any fines have been issued, none. So I, I guess I thought more of the... So I, I guess, I thought more of the discussion tonight was gonna be, um, how are these fines going to be, um, issued or anything like that? So I'll have to go to the next board, the DERB, tomorrow and find out if they're involved. And then I'll have to go to the select board on Thursday to see what they're involved, but the bottom line comes, yes, there's only a few, um, people that request, um, or say that there are violations because they're afraid to say that they're gonna be told that they're the ones that are bringing up the subject. I think we need to get away from that. People should be allowed to mention to someone on the board or someone in the town and say, there is a violation here because we're not, you guys are not able or the zoning is not able to search the whole town. But there should not be a stigma that says, if you complain, your name is gonna be announced. If there is a violation, then the person that is inspecting the violation should say yes or no and go back to the person and tell them, you know, there is no violation, we're gonna keep this quiet. Or if there is a violation, it was brought to his attention and yes, we bring it to the, we write up a violation. There's no need, if I'm to say something about someone's place, that my name has to be put out there, okay? Yes, there's...
Is it put out there, Tara? I don't believe their name is out there.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. But, um, I mean, I, I guess that, I, I mean, I'll be the first one. If there is no need to have persons' names out there, I'll spread the word and say, let's start reporting these people or places and your name will not be announced. And I'm sure you're gonna get more complaints. The other thing is, um, yes, our...
Can I, Jim, can I interrupt you there?
Sure.
Uh, um, it's been my understanding, they're not really announcing people's names.
Well, I was told if I was to announce some place...
You have to give your name to the town, just to prove that it's not some, um, bad feeling between neighbors, some longstanding feud, but nobody's going to announce your name or put it in the newspaper. Megan Mandel says that their garage in the, no, that's not going up.
Actually, I was, I was...
Misunderstanding, Jim.
Are you done? Actually, I was told when I mentioned one place that my name would be announced and I said, you know, I don't wanna single out that one person. I, there is a lot of places in town, I'm gonna leave it in your hands. But, I mean, yes, it was told to me that if I was to mention something, my name would have to be told to the person that I was the one that complained.
Well, was that, was that a person in, uh, in, here in the government, here in town?
Yes. Yes.
Well, I think that was early days, Jim, I, because that's definitely not the way that they're, I've been told it's going to be handled.
I just wanna make sure it was within the last year.
Okay.
But, putting that aside, I just wanna make sure people understand, they are able to go out there and make complaints and that way we can find out what's happening. But I guess my, my major thing is basically tonight is to find out why only two complaints out of everything that we've been doing in town to try to clean up have been made and no fines have been made. I'd love to see win fines. I've, I've heard the select board have secrets out there in their executive sessions that something's gonna come out. I don't see anything coming out or anything like that, so.
Jim, excuse me, Jim, but I believe that Hannah said we have two complaints a week. That's more than...
And there have been fines issued.
And there, how many?
I give, sorry.
How many fines have been issued to, uh?
Fines are going to be issued. They haven't been yet, but the thirty-day mark was just up. We have to remember that we weren't allowed to enforce this until just, in, it was like April because we had to wait till all the snow came off. This, we decided not to do it till then. We've had complaints come in, three of the people have cleaned up their properties and then there's two that haven't and the thirty days was just up, so.
So that's more than two, that's five since April.
Hold up, first off, fines could have been issued back when the ordinance was approved back in October.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they...
Process of being, uh...
But they made the decision, uh, the select board made the decision to, um, give it time for people to absorb it and, and, and wait until the snow had melted.
They wanted all those flyers sent out, which was...
And, and they wanted flyers sent out.
People could be...
Right, and flyers were sent out in March.
So we both, we both agree, Jim, that there's two bad places on Route seven, okay? I mean, let's face it.
We all see, we all see Route seven, we don't see the other outskirts, but that's fine.
But, but if you go up to somebody that has a smaller violation and they say, what the hell are you picking on me for? Why don't you pick on those two guys on Route seven? And I think we're working on it. I talked to Mike about it and he's, uh, he's issued some problems on one place and he's, uh, been in the other place. My son goes in their place because the kids don't go to school.
Yeah, that's fine.
We wanna be careful not to name any names.
We've been very careful for a long time about being things.
Yeah, naming names and so on.
Two of them were on back roads, so people are making complaints.
Right.
Yeah.
Two of them were on back roads.
Okay, no, that's fine. Hannah, in the list you gave me, I didn't see, I saw one on the back road. I mean, I, I was very surprised at one. But, uh, the only, the only, the only other one that was in the, um, past year was, um, on Route seven, which, which again, I'm, I'm, I'm just surprised the tag sale is up and running. The cars are in there, they're, they got their for sale signs on them. And, uh, house next door is, I mean, the guys that are working on Route seven are must-having a wonderful time, kinda just looking at that and saying, wow, this is Pownell? Thank you very much. You guys have a good night.
Okay, Jim, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Jim. Always appreciate your input.
That ends public comment, so our next thing is to adjourn.
Is there anybody else on there?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Hi, second.
One favor?
Hi. Thank you, Jimmy. Hi.